The Oskaloosa City Council to order. Today is Monday, December 15, 2014. Let's start with the invocation by Pastor Dale Visser, First Christian Reform Church.
Let us pray. Father, we come before you tonight. We thank you for the many blessings you give. We thank you for your glorious goodness upon this country, Lord, and upon this state, and upon this county, Lord, and this city. We thank you for all that you provide. Lord, we acknowledge you in these things. We thank you for the opportunity of this city council to meet tonight. We pray that they would look to you and look for guidance and direction for the decisions that are made, that they would seek the decisions that are best for the majority, as many as possible, Lord, for all the decisions and difficult things that they must decide. We ask, dear Father, your blessing upon this time, upon this city, Lord. We thank you for the many blessings here in Oskaloosa. We thank you for the many provisions that you give. We pray for those who have special needs and special struggles. We ask, Father, that we might all reach out to them and minister to them as best as possible. May you be with the churches, may you be with the communities, the businesses, the opportunities that are there, Father, to give and to serve. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. You join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
Versteg?
Here.
Walling?
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. The community is asked to come and speak before the mayor and city council, asked to keep statements brief. Time will be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions that are to be asked of the city staff, the council members, or the mayor, we ask that you ask them prior to speaking to the full council, so that way we can research them and perhaps answer the question away from a full meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item number five is the consent agenda. These are all items that are pretty much routine in nature. So, in there are various board and minute, board and commission minutes, financial reports, appointments, reappointments to the historic preservation, and board of adjustment committees. And then also, the last item is a resolution scheduling a public hearing for an ordinance on zoning in Chapter 17.24 having to do with the site development regulations and dealing with nonconforming development in the city of Oskaloosa zoning ordinance. This has to do with residences being rebuilt when they're on a nonconforming lot. So, we'll have the hearing on that at the next meeting. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So.
Okay, hanging discussion. Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Gets us to the regular agenda. Item A, consider an ordinance to vacate and sell a 120-foot by 16 and 1/2-foot of the north-south public alley adjacent to 211 North J Street. This is the second reading of it. Terry Wolfswinkle, the owner of 211 North J, has requested that the portion of the north-south alley adjacent to his property be vacated. Mr. Wolfswinkle owns the properties directly east, 211 North J Street, and west, 1112B Avenue West, of the requested alley vacate. The proposed alley had been paved in concrete when the chiropractic clinic was built in 2001. City conducted a survey of households with direct access to this alley. Among the residents that responded, a total of three, one of them, Mr. Wolfswinkle, wanted the alley to be vacated, and two folks, Fisher Quality Car Wash and Fisher Investments, do not want the alley vacated. Fisher Quality Car Wash at 1101 A Avenue West does not want the alley vacated because it serves his customers. Fisher Investments at 1107 A Avenue West does not want the alley vacated because it will restrict access to the new storefronts. Both 1101 and 1107 A Avenue West will have access to their properties along the south half of the alley from A Avenue. This alley also contains Oskaloosa Water, Mid-American Energy, utility infrastructure, and MCG infrastructure. Easement rights will need to be retained for access to the above-mentioned utilities. This item was originally brought before the city council on August 18 of 2014. At that meeting, Fisher Quality Car Wash stated that they had plans to develop their property, which resulted in a denial of the alley vacate. However, because no site plan had been submitted by Quality Car Wash since then, Terry Wolfswinkle has reapplied for this alley vacate. Planning and zoning commission considered this item at their November 10, 2014, meeting, and recommended by a vote of 7-0 that the city council approve the vacate request. Do we have a motion supporting it for the second reading?
So.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Discussion.
I guess I would like to just bring up, at the last meeting, I voted in favor of the vacate. Since that time, I've had significant conversation with Mr. Fisher that owns the investment, not the car wash. I believe Mr. Moore is also here representing Mr. Fisher, is that correct?
Yes.
Would you care to address the entire council on some of the things you shared with me, so that we're all aware of Mr. Fisher's view on this?
Agreed. Hassan?
Yeah.
I think that Mr. Fisher's, Darryl Fisher's, letter outlined his concerns fairly succinctly. Eliminating the egress to the north would put a lot of burden on the southern ingress, forcing potential traffic, delivery trucks, et cetera, to have to back out onto A Avenue after they ingress to the parking lot from A Avenue, especially when there's customers utilizing both Fisher Investments buildings to the west and Fisher Car Wash building to the east. And I understand, although I'm late to the game in this issue, that Mr. Wolfswinkle proposes that he'll maintain the alley in an open way, but when you look at an aerial photo of the alley, or the real estate involved, Mr. Wolfswinkle owns to the west side of the alley, and it only makes sense that at some point that north egress would be closed to join those two parcels, so that it would eliminate any traffic leaving the properties to the north, again burdening potential problem, safety issues with A Avenue. I think the councils worked hard at developing and extending a hand to commercial properties, commercial owners that want to develop, et cetera. I think closing the alley to the north sends the wrong message, that A Avenue West corridor is very important. There's businesses that are out there. We, I think the council wants to, or should project a business-friendly attitude towards them. I think closing the alley, in effect, sends a message that we're willing to stifle commercial development on that corridor. Thank you.
The other comment that, sorry.
Mr. Wolfswinkle? It seems fair to offer equal time at the podium if you would like it.
Just a short comment. When we first proposed this in August and at the P&amp;Z, Darryl Fisher, Fisher Investments, had no problems with us buying the property and purchasing the alley. They said, "Go ahead, it's not going to affect us at all." I don't, I understand the concern, but the units that he's building are 1,000 square foot. The majority of the vehicles that are going to be supplying, supplies, deliveries are going to be UPS or FedEx. They'll be able to turn right down in front of the shops. They're not going to want to pull their two-wheelers on the crushed rock anyway to the back doors. I understand the concern about backing, you can't back onto A Avenue. It's just interesting that all the changes, and I know that comes up. To be real honest, when I decided to do this, I really didn't expect this kind of hassle. I didn't expect to write up on the front page. I didn't expect all the phone calls from people after the last meeting. I should actually run for office, all the support I had from them, but neither here nor there. Whatever you guys decide, you have to do what's right for Oskaloosa and everything. So, I'm not going to steal a lot of your time. One of the things I've learned in being in business for 30 years, if you get a lot of doors slammed in your face, it's probably telling you that your decision to do something was the wrong decision. And it'll just save me a bunch of money that I won't spend that way. But anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment on the delivery portion of this.
Okay.
I spent 40 years in the delivery business, and closing that north alley is not going to affect delivery in any way. If Darryl Fisher really was concerned about delivery, he would have left the east-west alley that he owns open, where he's also building new doors in the back. And any semi that wants to deliver, there could have egressed through that. They wouldn't have to back out on the highway. Those drivers out there are safe drivers. That's their business, deliver. If you want to see somebody deliver in an unsafe way, watch Hardy's truck go into Hardy's sometime, and back in over three lanes of traffic. He does it, and I don't think, Jake, there's ever been an accident there, has it because of him? Do you recall any accidents on A Avenue West for delivery trucks because of unsafe conditions?
I don't think I can answer that.
There has been, not I don't think. So, saying delivery, just take that color out of the picture. Closing that alley, if he wants to close it, is not going to affect the delivery. And he said he wouldn't close it? I don't think it makes any difference. I think he should buy the alley. Fisher was worried about, while he would have left the east-west alley open. That's all I got to say.
I guess the only, I just wanted to share the further comments. I would still like to see a way that this could be worked out between all the property owners involved, specific to my conversation with Mr. Fisher from Fisher Investments. You know, he commented to me, he'd be happy to help pay for snow removal on that alley. He'd be happy to repair it if it wasn't poured deep enough for trucks to drive on it. He wants to keep it open. He was even open to figuring out a way to work out an agreement between the parties. So, you know, I'd love for that to happen. I just don't know with the information that's presented here to us, I can vote on closing it. And I did vote that way last week, but with all the information I've learned, or two weeks ago, you know, I want Mr. Wolfswinkle to move forward with his development. I don't want him to waste money, you know, but I really wish the parties involved could work through this for everybody's benefit. I guess if it's possible, I'd also like to amend the motion, although I didn't make the first of it. But, and I'm not sure, Jason brought it up at the last meeting, if somehow this isn't going to go forward, I would like to give Mr. Wolfswinkle his money returned for the permit, since this is the second time he had to go through that, the $100 or whatever he had to spend. That's my own personal opinion, if we end up not moving this forward. I don't know how we can do that procedure. I need help from somebody else, but I don't want him to pay that premium for us to not be able to move forward with this.
We can make that motion after the vote, can we not?
No, I was trying to remember. Mike, do we need to agendize that?
I think that could be included with this item, since it was paid.
Why don't we, why don't we do that after we get done with the vote, then?
Okay.
I too, I've talked with Terrell, I've talked with Matt, I've talked with Darryl, and, you know, I said I was on the fence with this after finding out some more. You know, I went over to Mahaska Beacon, and I was looking at, and I saw that was the only access through there. When you and I had talked, I had originally thought that alley that went behind his building was a city alley. It's not. He does own that, and you own the other, the other half. So, I'm inclined just to leave it.
I have the only other half.
Okay. So, I don't know what's going to happen five years, 10 years, 15 years from now. At this point, I've been inclined to leave it open. Now, before I came up here, I thought, and I thought for a moment, what if Darryl Fisher owned that side, the other side of that? Would we then be talking seriously about closing that alley if he did?
Right.
And if he did, how is that fair to Terrell? And so, on the way up here, I was thinking, what would we be doing then? Now, under these conditions, I'm inclined to leave it open. I'm also inclined to give you all your money back and hope that there's a way that you guys can work this out, and we can still come back and figure out a solution for this.
Quick system.
Yep. Podium, though, please.
It would have been nice if Darryl would have come and talked to me, like he talked to you. If he wanted to work things out, it would have been nice that he would, as a businessman, to businessman, come and talk to me. When I've tried to contact him with emails and stuff, he very seldom replies. So, I agree, it'd be nice to work things out, but history kind of dictates otherwise, but that's all I have to say.
Terry, just a minute. You're down there every day, right at your building?
Yes, sir.
How many, how much traffic do you see going through there? Now, there, none right now, because Darryl Fisher's got it all clogged up on the south end with his construction.
Yeah, I can show you pictures of it if you have them, like them, but I don't want to take your time.
How many, when that was open, how many cars actually used that alley?
Used that alley?
I have never seen.
Maybe one.
One what, a week, a month?
Yeah, not very often, because they all pulled through the parking lot. But.
I think the reality of it is you're absolutely, I don't think a truck's coming down there for 1,000 square feet, but then again, I don't know if there's going to ever be maybe great expectations goes from that side down to the other side for some reason. I don't know, maybe it happens.
One of the things is the way the alley egresses on B Avenue right now, it is, so, may I give this to you just to show what it, because it's not wide enough for then the trucks to really go out?
Car wash trucks are in trouble. It's, I think, it's the last page on there. It makes it easier to look. I may have to give somebody a tour.
Okay.
It looks something like this, because there's really not enough room. There's a utility pole, this is the picture, there's a utility pole to the west of that alley. That egress, I poured it, the egress the way I was told I had to do it. It's narrowed. The trucks can't make the turn already, they're already driving over the yard to do that. That's just to get out. Same way going in, they have to turn it tight because the utility pole's right up against the alley. The likelihood of a semi going in and out there too often is highly unlikely. The likelihood of a semi going, making delivery there is highly unlikely. But, you know, I'm not a very good photographer. I did the best I could just to kind of show what was going on and how there's access from K, there's access from A Avenue, you know. I've taken enough of your time, but that's, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Unless you have some questions for me before I step back? Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
I would say this, there's been a lot of discussion about this, and I think, where's, I saw the other Fisher that had the car wash, is it? There he is, up front. I'm leaning the other way on this, and you had talked about getting some variances. I'm not going to support any variances. If this alley is that important to stay open, it needs to stay open that way, and everybody needs to be able to build within the area that they bought. So, I want to be clear on that one, on where we're going. And I want to be pro-business. I want you to do what you need to do, but if it's that important that this stays open, then it should be absolutely important that no variances get applied to this as well. Would you agree with that? Okay, thank you.
My name's Gary Fisher, and I have the quality car wash, but other variances have been allowed in other areas, you know, too. But, as far as the alley being used, the alley is now open seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Mr. Wolfswinkle's business is open, I think, four days and maybe not a complete four at that. So, when it's closed, everybody else will not have access to it and not be allowed to use it any other time, and I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's right. Whether it's UPS or a small tractor-trailer that goes through, it doesn't mean it's going to be a tractor-trailer that's 53-foot long that uses that. And the way they go out of the alley now over on B, the way he has explained, he didn't pave the whole alley when he built his business. The east, or the west portion of that alley is not completely paved. And so, they try to stay on the pavement part of the alley, and they possibly do drag their wheels over into the grass a little bit, but that is not part of his cement, that's still part of the alley. So, on those pictures, if you look at the Beacon site, it'll show that the alley is not completely paved. It's, I don't know what percent it is, at least 75 or 80, it's a large portion of it, but it's not completely paved. So, the alley is used more than, than, it's not a high-traffic area. Nobody's ever said that, but it is used, and it's used, you know, on the weekends, too. And so, and he wouldn't see that because he's not here, but there are others of us that are, and I don't know what kind of business Fisher Investments is going to have in their new building, and who knows, you know, what kind of hours they would keep, but, so, that was it as far as, you know, the alley is used more than just a car a week, or a car or two a week. I go through it more than that, when I go through there with my pit cleaner. And so. Anything else?
No. Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, the vote will be on support for vacating and selling the north-south public alley. Roll call, please.
Yates?
No.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
No.
Moore?
No.
Ben Zetton?
No.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
No.
Okay, it fails, 5-2.
I would like to make a motion here, if this is appropriate time.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we return all of Mr. Wolfswinkle's fees back to him for what he's paid for so far.
Okay, these would be fees that were paid to the city of Oskaloosa?
That's correct.
And it's for this thing that we just voted on?
That's correct.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Do we have an estimate of how much that would be?
It's just on this item, not the first time they brought it.
That is correct.
To it. I think it's just $100.
$100.
$100 fee.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on, item B. This has to do with the resolution approving a 208E agreement, approving the city of Oskaloosa, Iowa, and Forest Cemetery. During the budget work session for the fiscal year 2014 amended budget and the 2015 proposed budget, the city was approached by Forest Cemetery Association with a request to provide financial assistance. The association requested assistance from the city to help offset day-to-day operational and maintenance costs with running the cemetery. The city's contribution was requested as a means to help keep the facility financially viable until a plan can be developed, which would alleviate the need for future financial contributions from the city, or the need for the city to assume the entire operations of the cemetery. Following the discussions at the budget work session, the city council directed and approved the 208E agreement with Forest Cemetery that included a contribution of $50,000 in fiscal year 2014 and $50,000 in fiscal year 2015 for operational and maintenance offsets. The agreement also included city provided snow removal services as a means to further lower the operating expenses for Forest. On December 8, 2014, the city was contacted again by Forest with a request to receive an additional $100,000 for calendar year 2015. This item is presented for the city council to consider signing a 208E agreement with Forest Cemetery to provide continued direct and indirect contributions to offset operational expenses for the organization as a community benefit. Forest Cemetery has requested the city provide direct assistance as soon as January of 2015. The 208E agreement included with this item outlines the expectations of the parties involved and formalizes the relationship during this potential contribution period. A copy of the draft 208E agreement, as well as other required documentation, was attached as part of the agenda for city council review. So, at this point, we're just considering a resolution to approve a 208E agreement to Robert's rules being what they are. Do we have a motion to support this resolution?
Second.
Okay, got a motion, second, so it's open for discussion. For those who are watching on camera, we have had a work session on a part of this already, and so for that reason, some of the information may seem that it perhaps is known by the council, and you don't know why, that's why. So, continuing our work session discussion, Gordon, if you want to, you had passed out, I believe, when we were getting ready for the meeting, some estimates as far as the maintenance costs and liabilities, that sort of thing of the cemetery. Do you have any commentary to go with that?
Yes, just a little bit. Try to kind of organize it. We were talking about foundations and our changes that we've made and the price increase and so on like that. We expect that to generate an additional about $12,000 to $15,000. We're looking forward to that, but we're not going to realize much of it until spring of next year, because we're beyond the season where we put those in. We put some in, and we generated about $8,000, and that's.
And Forest is the only one that can do the foundation.
Yes, yes. And that's the change. We do them all. Okay. On the expenses, we had been paying our office manager $35,000 a year, which actually was being paid by Musco. Okay. She found a different career path, and we hired two ladies. They were newly retired from the Midwest One Bank, and their salary will be $23,600. So, we gained about $11,400 in reduced expenses on those salaries. And they're very good people. They seem to have a great interest in the cemetery and are very, very supportive in trying to improve everything, and they're really into the details, particularly in the Iowa code and the cemetery code, which was needed. Unforeseen expenses that we just didn't know about this time last year, our computer completely died. It cost us $1,406.19 for a new computer and the installation and getting up and run again. Transmission went out on our pickup, and we were in no position to buy a different pickup, so we replaced the transmission. It was $2,600. We bought a John Deere diesel mower and spent $10,000 for it, and that was not an unexpected expense, except the one it replaced was about five years old and it was running on a prayer. We put more, we put more hours on a mower in one year than you would do on your personal mowers at home in 10 years. We'll run about 700 hours in two, two and a half years on a mower. So, we spent that money. The other unexpected expense, we had a major windstorm last, what, April was it? And we had about 25 trees damaged. Two of them were huge, and we had to call in outside help that had boom trucks and so on like that. So, we spent about $4,200 with that help, and we just had to do it. We took care of all the rest of the tree damage, but we needed help on those big ones. So, to make a long story short, we've made changes that would help on income, help on expenses. We still need your help. The cemetery is 154 years old this year, and it's our job, folks, to keep it as a pride of the community for another 154 years. We need your help.
Gordon, do you mind if I comment? Previous officer's manager's payroll is being paid by a private company. With the changes that are being made, is the reduced amount of the 23, is that still being paid by private funds?
No.
Or is that now figured into the total expenses of the cemetery?
That's figured, we're paying that now. That's our expenses in the cemetery.
All right, thank you. This is a one-year 208E agreement, just like we did last time, correct?
It is, I mean, there's no term, I guess I left it open-ended so that you can discuss the term and the following. So, win contribution, how much, that's up to all of you. I've left it flexible enough to.
May I add a comment? I left something out. The expense sheet that I handed out projects our expenses until March 15. It shows, it come up a total of $39,000. We have $24,000 in our checking. I think we could reasonably expect to earn or have $5,000 a month income, understanding that in winter time, our income is down, but we should be able to expect $15,000 in income over that three-month period. Okay? Okay, so 15 and 24 is $39,000. But that wouldn't leave us anything left in checking. So, I know your budget work is done in February, and typically, a payment, if you choose to make it for us, would be March, but we probably could use a little help before that. $10,000 would give us a little bit of a safety valve. If you saw fit to do half of the first 50-
How much of the first $100,000 do you have left?
$24,000.
Okay.
Doesn't this also show that you have about $15,000 in overdue bills?
Yes.
So, I mean-
And a note?
Yeah.
There's a note for 20, that much?
Because I'm assuming back to the 208E agreement and the work session, he said it was perpetual. So, you're going to come back, he's going to catch it next year. So, how long do you want to set the 208E agreement for, just yearly? Because the amounts can change yearly without having an amount in the 208E agreement, just having the agreement and going to do something, I guess. Is that how you envisioned that, Mike, or not?
That's a loaded question. I think we've talked about being realistic. I didn't see this going away despite some of the comments that were made during the last budget session. And so, I thought each year, the city council would be interested in understanding what plans and progress are being made financially to remove the taxpayers' interest or contributions on an annual basis, and that's why I suggested it just be a year. But if the council is saying this is a priority, then setting it helps us for budget, because right now, the additional funds that are being requested, whether it be $5 or $100,000, are not included in this year's budget, and they're not included in our budget request for next year. So, having that longer period at least gives us some, it makes it a constant. I think it's smart for us to assume it's going to happen, but US council could turn that valve off at any point, say you're not interested. So, anyways, we've done it year to year with the idea that they'd come back, give updates, present progress, and then hear from you.
Well, I think we certainly want that as well, because we wouldn't want them to just have a free rein and take off with it, you know? We'd want to keep some control over that.
There'd be an annual discussion on the amount, but I think to get a 208E agreement that has a longer period with annual discussions on the amount would seem to make sense. Because I mean, I think you mentioned the work session, if I heard you right, no, we think this is going to be ongoing, there's a chance the amount could go up as well in years ahead.
It could, Doug. Our projection would be, if you go into 2018, about $115,000 to $20,000 deficit, based on income staying about the same. I hesitate to say it's going to be that exactly, because I would really like to see what this coming year does for us because of the changes we've made.
Right.
As we speak right at this moment, $100,000 is bare bones. It's not paying all of our bills, but-
Is there a plan to solvency here?
I beg you.
Is there a plan to solvency? Are you going to get back into the black?
No.
Okay. So, this really is probably a long-term problem?
Yes.
If it's not ours forever from this point on?
Yes.
I think the city of Oskaloosa is going to end up owning Forest Cemetery, and I think we should have a plan to use the money wisely to get Forest Cemetery in as good a shape as we can. I mean, if we're giving away money, I think some of the percentage should go back to the perpetual fund, and I think some of it should go to these people they owe. But now, just for the conversation, but I-
That's kind of where I was going with this long-term 208E agreement. There's got to be some way to get them, I mean, if they're bare bones now, they're going to be, they're going to need more, and they're still not really feeding the perpetual fund, and that's what we need to build. I mean, we need to sit down and say, listen, if we're going to get involved in this, we have to be able to be kicking money into that perpetual fund. And it might be a 10- or 20-year plan for us, but every year, you know, if we're going to say, listen, we're going to give you $100 for operating, we need to kick in, you know, put a stipulation on a 10, 15, 20,000 that goes into the perpetual fund that gets us out of this, and have some damn plan to get out rather than just be stuck in the red. Now, we didn't have that discussion last year because it was, they needed the money now. And, you know, I know you need the money now again, but I'm okay with doing this, but we need to get back to the table and probably have a work session of saying, let's get back to a long-term, maybe do this 208E agreement, and come up with some of those that get us the long-term plan that say, listen, we'll give you what you want, but we want X amount of dollars going into that perpetual fund that'll get us out, or at least build us a way out.
Now, you did say there was time when it wasn't going into the perpetual fund, but now that has been resolved, and so with every-
We've gone from perpetual care fund, if you go back six or seven years, when it was really getting drained, and it was down to about $170,000. We're now at $238,000. Last year, at about this time, or a little before, it was more like $213,000. So, we're gaining on it. We've had a similar discussion numerous times, Jason, and if we could get that perpetual care fund built back up to a million, it used to be like $700,000, okay? If we could get that up to a million, or a million and a half, then the interest or income from that would solve our operating expenses.
That's where I was going with that. I think you really need to be probably about $2 million.
Would a bond issued for a million and a half be a possibility somewhere along the line?
And I think we need to talk about that. What's the quickest way to get us out of that?
See, that's one avenue. The city to own it would be another avenue. It's my opinion that you're better off having us run it than you could be running it, only because I think we're, I think we can do it cheaper than you can do it.
You're not getting an argument out of me. I don't think there's anybody up here that's going to argue with me on that one.
We're just afraid what's going to happen.
A lot of cities own their cemeteries now.
Yes, they do.
So, the resolution talks about supporting the 208E, however, the 208E has some blanks in it. So, the first paragraph as to what date we made the agreement, that's going to be easy to fill in. Getting into the further language, bullet point one talks about a one-time contribution, the sum of how much for fiscal year what, and the sum of some other amount for the next fiscal year to be used for Forest for upkeep and maintenance. Do we have a proposal from anyone as to what the dollar figure should be in the fiscal years?
To get to the end of our fiscal year, which is July 1st, June 30th, between now and June 30th, what is the amount that you need for, in our current fiscal year?
$50,000.
Yeah.
So, if we did the same thing we did last year, $50 in each of our fiscal years or whatever we did, is that what we did, Michael?
Yes.
Yep. I'm okay with that, but on that second $50, I think we need to put a rider on that that says we need to have a work session and really, I think we all knew when we heard this last year, and we said, hey, you know what? Let's give them a year, let's see what happens. But now, it's time, you know, it's been a year. We know this is going to be a long-term deal. If we say, listen, we've got to have some agreement in place by the second payment, you know, which would be Ju-, July 1st, right?
July 1st, yeah.
Call it July 1st. It forces us to get to the table to get something figured out, rather than just get here again next year and say, oh, well, let's just give you another 100, and we'll talk about it at some point.
And then, what changes have been implemented already that, you know, we won't see until later in the year will help in the discussions, too?
Yeah.
What do, what do we want to challenge ourselves to work on, I guess? I agree with what you're saying in principle, I'm just trying to, what, when we say we want to come to the table and have a work session, what would it be to figure out the long-term strategy for the cemetery?
Yeah, I would say, you know, do we have a 208E agreement now?
Yes.
All right. So, I'm going to guess we could probably do a continuing resolution on the one that we have, put an expiration date on July 1st of 2015, and that forces us to get back to decide. We know we probably need a longer 208E agreement, and to think and talk about it and to get it. I just, I think if we're going to give money and not put any goals on it, or we're going to set standards, the check's just going to go out the door, and nothing's going to get done. And-
Well, I don't know if that's the case, because Gordy's been working on it, but-
Well, I understand that this is a long-term problem. They got, we got to figure out a plan really to get them to $2 million in their perpetual fund. Now, whether that's all of us, if that's some of us, if that's a bond issue, whatever that is, it's time to get that plan together. We kind of punted last year saying, ah, we'll wait and see how it goes. Well, here we are. What's going to stop us now from getting in 2015, not being in this exact same spot? I don't want to be here again having the same conversation.
So, back to what I was asking. First sum, do I hear a proposal for $50,000?
Yes.
Okay.
Fiscal year 2015? Yes.
Okay.
An additional year.
Yeah, because there's $50,000 already coming, right?
It would just be, it would be part of this newer 208E agreement.
Okay. And then, for the next fiscal year 2016, do we want to commit anything at this point?
We don't need to, right?
We don't have to.
But we could put it in our budget session.
For budget purposes, it would do us a lot of favors if we intend to-
Why don't we put $100,000 in there?
Yeah. I mean, we can, we can leave this out and force a conversation later, but I think we need to have some figure to budget on.
Yeah, no, I agree, so-
Now, for, you know, for Gordy's benefit, it would be nice if they had something that they could plan on after July 1st of 2015 as well.
Well, I don't think there's anybody sitting there saying we're not going to support the cemetery. We just have to figure out the best way to support it.
I think he can count on it. We just, you know, we got to get it right now. I mean, we got to get it right within our budget and get it square there.
So, you could put the $50 first for 2016.
And then, you know, Gordy and, you know, we need to get together and say, hey, let's get a date and start talking about it.
Okay, so, so what I'm hearing from the council is that we would leave the sum blank for fiscal year 2016. No, we would strike out putting anything in as far as fiscal year 2016 at this point. Is that right?
So, we're just looking to contribute an additional $50,000 in fiscal-
For this fiscal year?
2015.
Okay.
And immediately. So, there's a request I'm hearing. But also challenging ourselves is what I'm hearing, that as a part of our budget sessions, we're going to work through longer term-
Yes.
Yep. To support the cemetery.
Okay. Any further comments? Suggestions? Roll call.
That's okay with the ones that made the motion and seconded?
Sure.
And I just want to make sure I've got the motion right. We're just doing $50,000 for fiscal year 2015 at this stage with this. Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
First Egg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and help.
Thank you.
Item C. This is considering an ordinance to amend the zoning of the city of Oskaloosa by rezoning the east portion of the property at 615 E Avenue West from urban family residential. It's an R2 district to limited industrial. This is the second reading. Mahasset County Emergency Management Agency, they're the contract holder, and the Oskaloosa Community School District, which is the deed holder, have submitted a rezoning request for the property located at 615 E Avenue West. The parcel in consideration is .77 acres in area. Presently, the western portion of the property is zoned LI, limited industrial district, while the east portion is zoned R2, which is an urban family residential district. Mahasset County Emergency Management Agency wants the entire parcel to be in zoning compliance for vehicle storage purposes. Table 17.08B, which has permitted uses by zoning districts in the Oskaloosa Municipal Code, indicates that both long-term and short-term vehicle storage is permitted within an LI district. Short-term and long-term vehicle storage, both are not permitted within an R2 district. Planning and Zoning Commission considered this item at their November 10, 2014 meeting, recommending by 7-0 vote, city council approved the request to rezone the above-mentioned parcels to LI district. Mentioned this is the second reading. Do we have a motion for approval?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
First Egg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Drop the gun there.
Give me right along.
Yeah. Item B. As a presentation and discussion on a policy formalizing the continued use of complete streets design concepts in future city improvement projects, the city of Oskaloosa is working to formalize the process of street design, and that's by continuing use of complete streets design concepts through the Complete Streets policy. This will allow staff to determine the best streets and roads for complete street design concepts. Implementation of the Complete Streets policy will gain the process of planning, or guide the process of planning, funding, design, construction, operation, and maintenance of all new and modified streets in the city of Oskaloosa. City of Oskaloosa partnered with Oskaloosa Blue Zones to bring in a consultant that provided a workshop and presentation on complete streets for the city council, city staff, and community members. Complete streets are considered a best practice for infrastructural improvements, and will assist the community in its efforts to become a certified Blue Zones community. So, at this point, presentation? Okay.
Mayor Council, I appreciate your time to present this item. We had a study session, oh, I don't know, was it a month ago roughly? And this item is our attempt to take what we heard from you as council, as policymaking board, try to formalize it into a policy that we can use to operationalize on a day-to-day basis when we look at streets, street improvements. And I think the most important thing is that we're not saying that every road will, in fact, have some form of an improvement, but the policy does state that we will consider it. As a city, we will take it into consideration. Ideally, we'd have the improvements, some of those concepts included, and there is a not-to-exceed amount of 20% of the project cost, but it doesn't mean that it has to happen. You, as a group, before projects are bid, the design comes to you, and we discuss it. So, there would be an opportunity for us to present that information to you as well. We also plan to utilize the assistance of the Planning and Zoning Commission, because by code, they're supposed to look at all of our improvement projects, which includes street improvement projects. So, they would weigh in on these things as well, and they would come to you with a recommendation. So, we're trying to listen to what you said, and which is, it's not always going to happen, and I think we tried to say that as well, it's not always going to happen, but we at least want to take a project into consideration and perhaps apply that. So, just something that we talked about tonight, the mall parking lot redesign that was presented that generally everybody seemed to like, those principles were included in that design. We didn't, I didn't point it out to you, they were just in there. Third Avenue East, during that discussion, it was considered, and it wasn't included, so we moved on. So, that's how we would continue to operate. We'd talk about it. Sometimes it would work, sometimes it wouldn't. So, what I've asked Dylan to do is to give a presentation, talk about all the wonderful stuff with the policy, and then show you pretty pictures, because everybody loves pictures.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor Council. My name is Del Moltke. I'm a management analyst here for the city of Oskaloosa. Today, I'm here to talk about Complete Streets policy and how it will guide our staff in a standard practice that's already incorporated into several parts of Oskaloosa. A Complete Streets policy will guide planning, funding, design, construction, operation, a standard practice that's already incorporated into several parts of Oskaloosa. A complete streets policy will guide planning, funding, design, construction, operation, and maintenance of all new and modified streets here in the city of Oskaloosa. Completes are, complete streets are considered a best practice, and this policy will help us as becoming a Blue Zones certified community. Complete streets are made for everyone. They are designed and operated to enable safe access for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, and transit riders of all ages and abilities. Complete streets make it easy to cross the street, walk to shops, and bicycle to work. There is no singular design for complete streets. Each street is unique and responds to its only, its own community context. Roadways that are planned and designed using a complete streets approach may include sidewalks, bike or shared lanes, frequent and safe crossing opportunities, median islands, accessible pedestrian signals, curb extensions, narrow travel lanes, roundabouts, and much more. Complete streets in Oskaloosa will encourage residents to walk and bike to work, will encourage them to walk while shopping, and will walk or bike for recreational activities. New designs will help commuters feel safer and will create a traffic system with less accidents. Children will have access walking to and from school, and traffic calming devices will make neighborhoods safer and will encourage people to walk. So why should we strive for complete streets? Well, here is one design on complete streets. As Mike said, there are many, and if it doesn't fit the bill on a certain street, then we just would move on or try to incorporate other items into the complete street. By adopting a complete streets policy, we can make significant change here in Oskaloosa. Walking and bike, biking have always existed. We just want to bring it back and make it easier for the people of Oskaloosa. Updating a street to complete street makes a street better for automobiles, bicycles, and walking. Complete streets have been shown to increase neighborhood values, and complete streets create more desirable neighborhoods that attract more people and development. This policy is to formalize the process we are already doing, because we already have incorporated concepts of complete streets here in Oskaloosa. As you can see from this slide, the curb extensions currently in downtown, and the roundabout in the northwest corner of town. We also have a road diet on North Market, and also the multi-use recreational trail around town. I wanted to show you another concept that we could incorporate within the city of Oskaloosa. This would be something that would make a crossing much safer, for example, William Penn or at Smokey Row. Oskaloosa is actually a great candidate for complete streets because of the current grid-like system and the many road improvements that are coming up for completion. Several cities in Iowa have actually already adopted streets policy, complete streets policy, excuse me, and smaller cities like Sibley, Conrad, and Kiasako are incorporating complete street components. Complete streets can be incorporated in most street plans for a fraction of their overall cost. The policy that we have presented in front of you shows that it cannot exceed over 20% of the original street design. And a Minnesota state-manded feasibility study found that complete streets approach would not significantly increase cost and would actually provide valuable safety benefits. So bringing this all together, adopting this complete streets policy will help Oskaloosa accommodate all forms of transportation. Complete streets will ultimately save Oskaloosa money while producing a better network of transportation, and adopting a complete streets policy will formalize the process of street design by continuing the use of street design concepts throughout the city of Oskaloosa. I'd welcome any questions that you have.
I was really intrigued by the picture you had of the crosswalk island potentially being one, yeah, there's the one. So you mentioned in there that it could be William Penn or Smokey Row. If that was done to the William Penn crosswalk, would you expect the DOT to go along with that, given that it's about a 35 mile an hour speed zone? And would that eliminate the need for those yellow signals bringing traffic to a stop?
I would consider that more of an engineering question as far as the signs and maybe the signage, but I definitely know that this is a speed-reducing item, kind of a median that you would put, put in the road. And so people can see this from a farther distance away, and as soon as they see it, they want to slow down when they do see it. And so that's why it would be recommended for that type of stop, because it would allow for a safer crosswalk. As far as the approval from the DOT, they have incorporated other complete street concepts across the state, so I'd see them being possibly onboard for this.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why they would object to it. I mean, they, this is what the DOT pushes for, for design. So if we're willing to pay for it and as long as the, the traffic, you know, it's designed in a way that accommodates all the current traffic, I don't see why it wouldn't be, wouldn't be approved. So that's something that, if there's support for it, we'd want to talk to them some more about it. But we've had, I mentioned to one of the DOT staff members and they just said, yeah, we'll be happy to talk to you about those things.
Wouldn't it be true, we're probably never going to do those two projects until the bypass is done, and then we're going to own those roads, right? Eventually, would, the, the future would lead to?
Well, I think we wouldn't do it until the bypass is done.
Well, because I, I'm not sure you could.
Why?
Because of the DOT. I mean, if you're going to do that at Penn, you're going to have to widen the road.
No.
No.
You're narrowing.
Well, they aren't going to go four lane to two lanes at the crosswalk, guys. I'm not against.
That's what it is. Going from four to two. It's going from four to two. It's going to slow traffic down.
Yeah, I don't think that's going to fly. It, it doesn't make much difference.
I don't think it does.
I was trying to make the point, it would happen after the bypass.
Okay. I was just asking why, I didn't know why you considered it that way.
Well, I think conceptually, when we, when you're going to design a street, Dylan or Mike either one, that you would come to us beforehand, before you spent money on, let's say, Garden Associates or anybody like that, and make sure that we're even going to get onboard with what you have in mind for that very particular street, whichever street it happens to be in the future. Would that be something that would be a thing we should do?
I guess what I would say is, we would, this causes us to formally pause as we're designing these roads and say, hey, us and our contractors, and say, okay, are these elements being looked at? Because I don't think they were being looked at before. I think we were more interested in just ripping the road out, putting the pavement back down. And, and so I think this is, and you've seen it now, I think, on some of the projects that we're designing in-house, we're trying to do that. Maybe a little more flexibility doesn't cost us any money. We can look at those designs and it doesn't necessarily cost anything, just go, hey, what would this look like?
And I guess that's what I'm talking, is that we'll see that before you really get into the heavy design of that street to make sure.
My preference would be that we would have some concurrence that, that within the, as long as we operate within the policy, we're going to present that to you pre-bid. And there's going to be a public, there could be public input process. I mean, there's stuff that would be required, but I also don't want to slow up every project that we're doing. We all work for you, we want to make sure we're doing what you want done. But I also don't want to necessarily, we don't want to have council discussing, debating design standards. That's the engineers. That's what that's for. But we certainly can check in. And that's, we're going to have to, if that's what you require.
At what level do you check in? I mean, Aaron and I were talking about this, I brought it up, the bike lane, you know, we're talking about the bike racks. You know, how much are you, how much are you going to spend on bike racks? Yeah, it was voted on, on a 4-3, just as a pledge of support, and yet we're spending money on bike racks. I mean, where's, where's the ceiling on that?
In a $25 million budget, as your city manager, I feel very comfortable buying bike racks for, for facilities that needed them anyways. Just because they happen to be part of, they're being drug into the discussion of Blue Zones, I think that's a separate deal.
I don't think it is. The only reason that we're talking about this is, is because of Blue Zones. I mean, I don't support Blue Zones. I will continue to oppose what they're trying to do. But this is the only reason that we're talking about it. And for us, just exactly what Tom's saying, I don't want to have to come here and pull out all the work that we spent money on because we're not going to do this Blue Zones project on this street. I mean, we're going to have to re-engineer everything that comes in.
Yeah, I'll take with issue on some of what you're saying though, Jason, because if you look at the roundabout that was done, that has a complete street approach to it. That was done before any Blue Zone consideration was done in Oskaloosa.
As was the downtown, I mean, this was done a long time ago. Yeah, again, I think we should have good design standards, whatever we think, Blue Zones or not. We can debate what those are, but the things that we're seeing there don't seem that out of whack to me.
If you look at High Avenue East, First Avenue East, those would be projects that I would say would match complete street concepts. They have tree-lined streets, they've got the sidewalks, they have setbacks. Could they use a few improvements? I'm sure they would. It would be great. But that's a classic example of complete streets already existing.
I just think the timing is suspect, we're going into the budget. Why am I going to commit to anything until we can talk about, put all, everything on the table? Do you want to spend 20% on making the streets nice when we're having problems enforcing, you know, enforcing code? I mean, there's other things that go along out here, rather than just making the streets nice. I want some sort of complete plan all the way through, rather than just throwing.
Is that a plan? A guideline? Is that what this is?
It's just a guideline.
This is a policy that says we're going to look at these elements. Like, we're already looking at them anyways. We're just trying to get your buy-in as council, so that we don't necessarily have this debate every time and say, this is because of Blue Zones. No, it's because this is good design standards.
This is good for Oskaloosa.
This is, this is happening in other places. It's not just in the communities that are pursuing Blue Zone site designation. It's, it's all over the place. And they just happen to do it. We're trying to just get buy-in. And obviously, yes, there's an element to the Blue Zone.
We were talking about bike racks well before Blue Zone even came in. Small talk, just, you know, type of thing. Those things we were talking about, small conversations, but to me, this is just a guide to help the city to plan, to what we, you know, to make our town look more attractive also, and also for people who live here.
What percent are you going to tie to that?
What?
What percent are you going to tie to that?
Don't know.
It's got 20% here.
Yeah, well, that's just a number.
Well, I'm asking.
I don't know. I don't know.
It's up to, it doesn't say always 20%, does it? Well, that's why I'd like to clarify the 20%. Dylan, is it, for future councils down the road, 50 years, I mean, is the 20, is, are we saying, okay, if, if the cost of the road as designed, because we're going to put in complete streets, and I'm for complete streets, but if it's under, if it's under 20%, is it just, is it going to be automatic?
I think every road is under your view and the planning and zoning.
So the 20% isn't automatic? And that's what I wanted to make sure that I was.
If it's over, it's not going to work.
Right.
They're going to review every project.
Even, yeah. But he's not answering your question honestly. It is going to include that 20%. So when it comes to the table, all the work when you get it is going to include that. So then when we have a finished package that we're going to vote on, after it's been engineered, we're going to decide if we want to do that 20%?
Yes. All I want to know is make sure.
Why would we spend the money to put, you know, why would you even bother? Going back to Tom's question exactly, why would you spend the money on something that you know that you're not going to do in the first place?
What is it you're not going to do?
On each individual project, on each individual project, how would you, how do you know what you're going to do and what you're not going to do? Why would you spend the money to go engineer something that you might take off the table that council doesn't support? If you're going to look at it, project by project, like what I think we're hearing.
Well, you could flip it on its other side and say, oh, okay, so are we therefore going to lock ourselves into that every street that we re-engineer will be no better than the one that we took out?
We talked last budget, or one work session we had, we want to really start working towards improving the community.
Yeah.
To me, this is one of those major steps. It's not the step, it's just one of the major things we need to do.
So we're saying we're going to think about some.
When we go to improve the west side of town, it's going to take more than 20%. Or the north side of town. There's a lot of work needs to be done in the town.
Well, I don't know that the 20% would be considered on that deal though. I mean, it's going to take a lot of money, but it's not 20%.
We all know that. So there's, there's, town needs work. Plain and simple. That's how I stand on it.
I don't think.
I'm not sure I got an answer to my question. Yeah, you probably did. Well, no, I, because he got interrupted. I mean, I, what I, what I, am I hearing, okay, if, if the project's designed and it's got complete streets in it, if the complete street cost to any design is under 20%, is it taken off the table and talk about it? That's all I want to know.
No.
It's still on the table, correct? Thank you.
I guess what I'm, I'm trying to get the council to buy into the concept that this is good for the community, and that we're not necessarily having the debate every time. And I think we as staff are trying to say, 20% for a project is pretty reasonable. I mean, that could be spent on, if we spent on tree plantings, for crying out loud. I mean, you could, but that at least gives us some type of threshold to use when we're looking at the project and going, well, okay, it's, it's, if it's within that parameter, I think it should be included. I mean, if it's going to improve the community. And we can discuss and debate it at a public meeting and all that, and if you don't like it, then we would remove it, but I think the idea is that if it's put under that 20%, in my opinion, I would like to see it stay in. And then if it was going to exceed that, we would come to you and say, hey, here's what we've got in it now. If we were to do this above and beyond it, here's how much more it would cost the project. I guess that's how I saw it.
And back to my question though, mine wasn't questioning the 20%. What I was questioning was the idea and the thought that, what the street was going to look like.
Yeah.
To see that conceptually, that, that we would go along with that.
Yeah, I think that's, that's easy for us to share. And we can, we can say, hey, we've got a concept, this is what we're thinking roughly. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's not difficult.
Before engineering, before we had engineering.
That's right, before you spent the money on the engineering.
As long as Akilish is here and Nate and we have that, that in-house knowledge, yeah, I mean, I can play around with that a little bit, but.
Have we ever done a survey in this town of how many people's going to use bicycles or how many people are using bicycles? I don't see that many bicycles on the street except little kids at all.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that, you know, that's the beauty behind this. It's not just about bikes.
Yeah, it's about a lot of, it's just a component of it.
It's about bikes and pedestrians, and I'm saying, and it says right here, you're going to narrow the travel lanes. I don't want the travel lanes to be narrow. I want them wide.
Well, and go back to, I mean, that crossing picture, Dylan, that, that road isn't, if I remember the description correctly, that isn't necessarily reduced in size. It's more of a visual thing because they poured the concrete to make it look narrower.
That's brought four lanes of traffic down to two. To me, that's unsafe. I don't care if it is a pedestrian crossing, it's unsafe.
And I, and I, I just, Aaron, I, the council member say, I disagree. I mean, I think if that was a four lane, you're going to see more accidents on that four lane. I mean, that, if we were to change.
Yeah, if you go down to two, you're going to see a lot more accidents, I can guarantee it.
I think the statistics would show differently. And that's what happened on North Market Street, and that's, that's why that's a good example,